Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino. Here. Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo. Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Guanasso.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 14th, 2019.
Motion approved.
So ordered.
Calendar item number three is a communication from the city solicitor requesting that the city council enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy concerning St. Ville and the City of Revere to operate an auto body shop at 855 Broadway.
Madam Clerk and members of the city council, we will schedule that for a February 11th meeting at 6:00 PM. We will ask in attendance for that will be Iris Zenalnik, the outside legal source for the City of Revere, to be in attendance on that meeting to fully discuss the matter.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on a petition by National Grid to excavate, run, and maintain electrical conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity in accordance with the plan on file for service at 123 Shirley Avenue.
Is there anyone from National Grid here in attendance? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
How you doing? My name's Brendan Powell, electrical engineer with National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street in Malden. And today we have a petition to serve the customer at 123 Shirley Ave. This work will involve probably about two to three days of line work, approximately one day to set a transformer, and two days to pull in underground cable. I believe 123 Shirley Ave is a veterans' housing project for the city.
That's correct.
Do we have any questions?
Any other members in the audience wishing to speak as a proponent? Seeing hearing none, are there any members of the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Any opponents? Seeing hearing none, any city councilors? Councilor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. President, this is down on the corner of Shirley Ave and Nahant Avenue, and it's the site of the former synagogue that I used to belong to and that I was president of. The group that the building was sold to agreed to build a veterans' building. It's 30 units of one-bedroom units, and it's a beautiful building. It's about 90 percent complete. The only issue is National Grid gas. So, but this is, we'll take this one step first and get the electricity going, and I hope that everybody votes and approves this petition. Thank you.
Any other members of the council wishing to speak? Seeing hearing none, is there a wish of the council to vote on this this evening?
Yes.
A motion on the floor to approve.
Yes.
Roll call.
Shall the city council approve the petition of National Grid for electrical service at 123 Shirley Avenue? Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is a motion on the floor to suspend rules to take department heads first, and I'll read them in the order that I see. Diane Colwell, please come forward. Is the motion on the floor to suspend rules? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Diane, please tell us what item you're here on and what you're about.
Good evening. I'm here to request an approval of exemption for seven city workers so that they may work the polls on Election Day. There are two full-time and five part-time people, and it's just, we do this every year.
And you do it every year?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody else? Any wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next, Richard. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Richard Viskey, City Auditor, Budget Director, 281 Broadway, Revere. And I have two items, number 23, 19-025, for an appropriation in the amount of $85,000 for the completion of Griswold Park. And I did forward a letter to the council with some information, and happy to answer any questions on that.
Any other people wishing to speak on that? Well, it's the, shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $85,000 to Capital Project Reserve account to the St. Mary's Park account to fund the completion of Griswold Park? Is there a motion on the floor to approve this? There's a motion on the floor?
Mr. President, can, like, what?
Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see you're asking for $85,000. This is for the building in, also the back slot?
Yes, Council, this appropriation will fulfill the obligation to complete the extension of the backstop as well as build the, what we call the concession stand and outdoor facilities, as well as the final payment for the project itself. So, the $85,000 will bring this to completion with using a funding source for the capital improvement stabilization fund. And, again, I don't have too many details on the exact particulars of the project, but as far as from an appropriation to engage in the contract to finish this project, we need the $85,000 to go forward.
Well, you know, I, I thought I had the floor, I'm sorry. I've been trying to get this built for four years, so that's why I got questions. You know, just to get in our package that you, it would have been nice to know that you got, has the bid been accepted? Is it?
Well, I apologize, I'm not the one who's spearheading this particular project, I'm just here to try to get the funds, but the, as you know, the project came in last year at a pretty high, I think a million, $100,000.
Yeah, the original one was like, uh, the 700.
That was scrapped, and there was a new bid put out. That new bid came in at $659,530, and looking at the balance in the account now, I just did the math to make sure that we had enough money, because without the appropriation, we're not really allowed to sign a contract to move forward.
So, the building itself is going to be 600 and?
The total cost was 659,530, that was the winning bid.
That's without the backstop?
The backstop was an extra $30,000. That was a contract that was already engaged in, so we have to backfill that money as well.
Okay, have you got a contractor?
Yes.
You don't have any information on that?
Again, I'm more here, they asked me to come forward for the appropriation to execute the contract, so I apologize, I don't have a lot of the detail on the particular park. Maybe Donnie Charamello, Donnie maybe I'll get to him tomorrow on that.
Donnie, could you come up and tell us a little about the?
Through the chair.
I'm sorry.
Through the chair. Through the chair. Mr. Charamello, can you please come to the podium?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Can you give us some details about the building going at St. Mary's? I've been thinking, a lot of people are anxious out there to get this, finally get this done. Thank God for Election Day.
Superintendent of the Water, Sewer, and Drain Department, so we designed a stick frame building, basically sitting on concrete piers because it's a floodplain, and it sits about 36 inches above the floodplain. And, so, it's, it's, it has approximately 28 concrete piers, and it's this wooden frame building sits on top of it with two-by-six construction, truss frame roof, metal roof slanted out the back, so that all the drainage goes toward the back to the dry wells that do collect water. And the building is going to be used serving, you know, refreshments, snacks, and it has men's and women's ADA compliant restrooms. It also has a utility storage off to the side, which is mostly masonry, for maintenance equipment, lawn cutting equipment and what have you, and also two storage bins for the leagues, for, you know, you know, just the equipment itself. And, so, the, we put it out to bid, and we got many sub bids for the electrical, for the plumbing, for the roofing, metal roofing, and we got two general bids, of which, you know, one is $659,000. So, it's, it will now get done, and we've qualified the contractor, the lowest bidder, and he's a good contractor, so we probably can go forward with it.
Well, I know you did a lot of work for this, Donnie, I want to thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Council Rizzo.
I think my question was answered. I won't expand too much more upon it, it's just, it's just a sin that we've had to wait through three seasons without the utility of having the snack bar and the restrooms down there. And hopefully, finally, this will get done. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, through the chair to Councilor Rizzo, what was the original cost of that? You were the mayor at the time. For that particular?
So, that's another, Mr. President, if I may, he's asking me the question.
Council Rizzo.
So, through you to Council Rotundo, of course, it was four years ago now, but if my memory serves me correctly, it was about $700,000 at that time. When I left office, it was determined by the administration that that was way too much money, it was crazy to spend all that money, and now to see the bid come in about $40,000 less than what it was originally being talked about four years ago, I don't know that $40,000 is worth going three years without those facilities, Mr. President, but that's my question to you, Council Rotundo. My answer to you, my apologies, my answer.
Council Rotundo.
Thank you. So, through you to Mr. Charamello.
So?
You kind of were left with like a handful of products.
So, it was, the building, the original building came in, it was $750,000, and the only problem with that building was it was precast concrete. In total, that building weighed about a million pounds. So, you had about 300,000 pounds of foundation, and each building, there were three sections of it, each building weighed 80 ton. So, you had 240 ton of buildings. So, the only thing is about a million pounds of building on that site right now, like, so the site was being developed, and we were doing, August Construction was doing fine grading of the fields, and the building hadn't really gone out to bid yet. So, the site now became a little remote to do that type of work, and particularly to bring a 350-ton crane on the porous pavement parking lot to lift those heavy sections onto the site. So, there was a concern about the weight of the building and being in the floodplain.
Mr. President, through you.
Council Rotundo.
Yeah, I don't see the issue. I mean, I've seen it done in the back bay of Boston hundreds of times with actually Rotundo precast concrete out of Rehoboth, literally products twice that size. In fact, I believe that Nashville Street Jail, part of it was actually precast concrete with exemplary, I mean, really large, humongous pieces of precast jail. So, I mean, I don't see the issue with it. My question is, that would have been, I think, a lot more sturdy and have more longevity than a wood-framed product.
So, the unfortunate? Point of information here.
State your point, Council Patch.
Donnie, all due respect, the original bid wasn't turned down for the reasons you were given here, it was, they said it was too high.
Too much money.
This administration said it was too much money. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, at the end of the day, my issue is this, this was a product that could have been put there, would have had longevity, no one's going to tell me that you couldn't put the product there because I know that you can. But more importantly, even over $70,000 for a four-year timeframe, you're talking, you know, very small amount of money, and children didn't have the ability to use it, and I don't blame you. I mean, you were given a task that was a little bit, I think, at that point, above your grade, just getting into the system and having everything thrown at you. Once was a little unfair, but at the end of the day, to not go forward for it because it was too much money, and then now, four years later, find out that it was just, you know, less than $100,000 off is kind of silly. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just speaking of this current communication in front of us, I've spoken to, you know, the high school coaches or the high school softball coach that they use that field, and some of this money is going to be going towards netting on the field, that they lose a tremendous amount of balls into the creek, and they lose balls that hit into the play area. So, this $85,000 is, you know, in my opinion, is going to go towards a lot of the use in the field, extending the backstops, because, you know, under the current build, the backstops will not suffice, you know, just probably in the planning process, you know, I think everyone thought it looked nice, but after playing on the field and seeing what happened, you lose a lot of balls, leave that field, and just doing all the other additional amenities, but I'm in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a lot of back and forth on this going on this evening, and if I recall, we had several lengthy conversations about this in meetings that I've chaired over the last year, and regardless of what happened and went back and forth, we're here now, and we have the money, and let's just get it done.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils? Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just a little confused here. I thought I was good at math, but I'm hearing that there was an original bid of $750,000, and this building come in at $356,000, yet I'm hearing that it's less than $100,000 difference. What am I missing here?
So, you have, do you want to speak of like the netting, the extra, the other ancillary items? We want to do, so the league has requested some netting to, you know, you're probably looking at about, you know, $30,000 or $40,000. 80-foot lengths between the Field 3, closer to Washington Ave, so the balls don't hit on people's homes, and then another 80 feet on the Townline Brook side on Field Number 1, so that the balls don't go into the, into the, into the Brook, Townline Brook. The backstops have been extended by 12 feet for, to the amount of $22,000. And so, there was original money in, for this building of, I think, $622,000. So, yes, the building came in at $659,000. So, you know, if you add the backstop of 22 and the netting of another 40, in the, we're just shy of the 659, we have 622,000. So, I think theirs were the?
Oh, so, so the building is 659,000?
659,000.
Okay, now, okay, so now I'm not confused.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
What's the wish of the council? Take a vote? Roll call, please.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $85,000 from the Capital Project Reserve account to the St. Mary's Park account to fund the completion of Griswold Park? Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Next order of business, calendar item number 24.
Calendar, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation in the amount of $115,000 for the COPS program, which supports the school violence prevention program.
Richard.
Hello. Thank you. The police chief and his grant writer have secured a grant for our school violence prevention program. Total amount of the grant is $339,590, and that is subject to the city appropriating $115,000 of matching funds for that. So, we're always trying to leverage our capital dollars to the best of our ability, so the motion is to appropriate $115,000 from the capital improvement stabilization account to marry up with this grant so that we can execute it and move forward, and this is for putting cameras and security in all other schools in the city, and some extra security methods for the, for the schools. So, happy to answer any questions.
So, the question rises before us is, shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $115,000 from the capital improvement stabilization fund to the police grant matching funds account for COPS program? Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will there be any funds directed towards the various parks in which we've asked time and again to put cameras there?
My, my understanding is that this is strictly for school violence prevention, and I believe it's cameras that are going in all the particular schools, also some FOB cards for entries into front and back, and some police surveillance. I don't, I'm not exactly sure if there's any parks, I didn't recall hearing any parks involved with that.
Yeah, because that's where the majority of kids go, you know, after school, during school.
I'll be honest, again, I'm sorry I'm here, more for the money.
I know the message.
As far as the, you know, what that involves, it may involve parks, I'm not sure if police chief, I don't believe he's here, but he may be able to speak more to it, but in the meeting I had, it was more towards school security.
To me, it just seems, you know, counterintuitive to, to do this without having it in the parks.
Again, I'm not exactly sure if there was a basis for this.
I mean, that's, this is, we've asked for it now four different times in a two-year period, and nothing. So, I'm hard pressed to do it without the cameras in the parks. I want to support this, I do support it, but why do we keep on asking for money for particulars that we think will help the community, such as putting cameras in the park, as well as the schools, and yet we don't get it? I mean, and we were told before that it was a lot of money, this clearly shows that it's a small amount.
Well, just, just to answer your question, this particular matching funds is for that particular grant, so if we can leverage $3, $1 to get $3, I believe it's a worthwhile appropriation. We are in the process of planning for 2020 capital, and I'm sure that'll be contemplated, but just to make it clear, we're not done doing capital planning.
Thank you, Council Zambudo. Clearly, if we're leveraging funds from a particular grant, three to one, as you put, I would be hard pressed to think that we could not ask for money for the parks, considering that three of the parks, three major parks, we have a school that sit on, sit on them. Paul Revere, the, what do you call, I was going to call it the old McKinley, but the Hill Park in Hill School, as well as Wayland. I mean, just to think of three off the top of my head.
But just to be perfectly clear, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying for sure that it does not include those parks. I just can't say for certain that it does either, so, just to be fair, I don't know that.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to my colleague, if they're not in it, perhaps that's another conversation, but this is, this is a grant that we, we need to fund, and that's what we're voting on here tonight, so I think we should just move and fund this, which is a great, which is a great thing for the COPS program, and the three-to-one money is always a good thing. Thank you.
Council Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with what Council Zambudo says, but on a separate note, I do too want to see these other parks with the appropriate cameras. I believe, and I believe that the stadium is getting those done. I haven't heard, seen anything yet, but I was given, we were given approval when we had a motion earlier, or later in 2018, so we should follow up on that, on the stadium, and then maybe some of the other parks, but I'll be in favor of this motion tonight.
So noted. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. What is the total amount of the $450,000, something like that?
Yeah, it would be 455,000 total, 339 is the grant portion, and they, we're asking the city to appropriate 150,000 matching funds to execute this grant.
So, without the appropriation, the grant money is?
It's a requirement of the grant.
Yeah, it's required, okay. And I certainly will vote for this tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Council Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I know we've, we've talked about cameras, and I think cameras outside in the parks and playgrounds are absolutely necessary and needed, and I, to hear Councilor Keith still talk about Harry Delarusso Stadium is another mind-boggling issue we just talked about, restrooms and a snack bar that should have been built three years ago, and cameras were slated to be installed in the new stadium when we, when we opened it, but that's a whole nother conversation for another time. I just have a question about this particular grant, and I keep hearing three to one. So, if the city puts in the money that you are requesting now, how much does the city get back in grant money?
The grant is $339,590. The city would match $115,000, so it would be $400,000.
So, the total we'd have would be?
455,000.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that. Okay, very good.
Sorry if that wasn't clear, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Council Rizzo. Now, it's before us, is, shall the city council vote on this this evening? Roll call is necessary. Roll call of Madam President.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $115,000 from the capital improvement stabilization fund to the police grant matching funds account for the COPS program? Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. President.
Council Nowosowski.
Since we're under suspension, can we do the other two communications?
Talking about 20 and 21? 21 and 22. And there's a que, question, Council Janino, is that in that?
Yes, I was just going to ask if we could take up 21, so thank you.
21 and 22.
Calendar item number 21, communication from the mayor relative to the Revere Fire Department memorandum of agreement.
I'm John Varela, Director of HR, and I'm just here to ask the council to move forward with a memorandum of agreement that was reached between the mayor's office and the Revere Fire Department.
Any councils wishing to speak? Council Rotundo, excuse me, Council Janino, then you come.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak favorably on this. I hope that we can move it forward this evening and take a vote. Thank you.
Council Rotundo.
I fully support this, they deserve every penny they get, and if I could give them more, I would. I can tell you that they are the utmost professionals, and I appreciate the work that they do. Thank you.
Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had the unfortunate experience of being, having to have these gentlemen at my home during an occasion, or in the city during a traffic accident, and I don't think there's any finer group in the city, or anyone that would deserve this money any more than them. Thank you.
Any other councils? Council Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we have, without a doubt, the best fire department in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and these guys, I've seen these guys working, I know a lot of, a lot of you have seen working fires, but I saw them in Franklin Ave, I've seen them on Hitch Point Street, I've seen them on Shirley Ave, numerous fires, and these guys put their lives on the line, and as stated before, they deserve what they're getting in this. And I would hope that we all vote in favor of this and put them where they belong. Thank you.
I certainly. Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilor from the ward two. This fire department has done a great job as far as fighting fires, but also medical response, first aid, which I have witnessed, unfortunately, a few times, and they, outstanding work.
And I talked to the union president, and everybody's happy, and that's good with me, and I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Council Zambuto?
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't go without giving my endorsement to these first responders who are truly our heroes, and it's not until you see them in action that you can really appreciate what they do every single day. So, I'm happy that the administration came to a settlement, and everybody seems to be happy with it, which is unusual, but a good thing. Thank you.
Council Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I might as well keep the accolades going. So, I might as well applaud all you guys, you guys deserve it, between the service calls that keep increasing every year and keeping a high standard of morale, you know, with the staff that you have. And I'm glad that we were able to increase the amount of staff you had this year. So, that's a plus. You guys deserve it. Anything we can do to help make your job easier, I'm in favor of, so I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. I'd like to add my two cents in too. Certainly, to me, the Revere Fire Department has been a great aid to my family, naming my son, as on many occasions I need to have your service, and your professional response has been unbelievable. And I'm so happy to see that the administration and the Revere Fire Department are happy with the agreement so that everybody can go off happily and enjoy their jobs as they should, but more importantly, be attentive to their business, knowing that the city of Revere is behind them, and certainly it's a plus for all of us. Thank you for your service, and I'm so happy that we made this agreement. And before us, what we will do is, it's, shall the city council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between the city of Revere and the fire department covering fiscal years 2019 to 2021? Roll call has been ordered.
On the roll call, Council Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Referring back to the main audit of business. Excuse me, we have a speaker before us.
Kevin O'Hara, Revere Fire Fighters, President of the Union. I'd like to thank all the councilors here, the mayor, John. This is, thank you for the opportunity to let us bargain in good faith, and thank you again for putting this through and speeding up the process. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks for the kind comments, still. Yeah, thank you.
Calendar item number 22.
Calendar item number 22, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order request in the amount of $3.8 million for water main improvements.
Refer that to a public hearing on February 11th. Nick, would you like to say something? Please state your name and address, please.
Nick Reisstrom, City Engineer, 281 Broadway. So, I just wanted to come just to give a little bit of information about the water improvements that we're looking for with this loan order. Would include some streets off of Park Ave, four of them over there, Cambridge, Essex, Furnace, and Genesee, as well as some improvements on Shirley Ave ahead of some of the mass works, work that we're looking to do, and then also some long-overdue work on Northshore Road between Revere Street and Shawnee. And then also throughout, you know, different parts of the city, sort of miscellaneous hydrant and gate replacement.
That's great. We're going to have a public hearing on the 11th, and you can give us more detail on that. And thank you very, very much for being here today.
I just have one question, Mr. President.
Council Powers?
This is in, is this in addition to the $3 million we're going to be spending on Oak Island jacking under the tracks down there?
Yeah, so that's separate funding, separate project. This would be improvements in addition to that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Nick, for attending.
Thank you.
Next audit of business.
Calendar item number five is the Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Public Works, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, sorry.
We'll get used to that, takes a while.
I know, I know. So, the Public Works Subcommittee met along with Superintendent Donnie Caramello, and we did all decide that we would take the responsibility, the city would take the responsibility of, to fix the runoff from underground streams that are affecting property, properties. Superintendent Caramello believes that it wouldn't be a big expense for the city, and the ward councilors are asked to give property addresses of, that need to be fixed, that need attention. So, I think there has to be a road call tonight, road call tonight, in agreement with this?
No, there's no road call audit. If we could, we can just vote it out.
Oh, vote it out, okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to vote it out?
A motion is to vote it out, yes.
All in favor, all opposed? So, audit. Next.
Calendar item number six is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number six, 18368, there was a motion in regards to the commercial permit parking fee and a reduction to $100. The Legislative Affairs came up with a little bit of a happy medium, keeping it, sorry, reducing it to $300, and that would be only for residents, Revere residents with vehicles registered and a business registered to the city of Revere, where they would already be paying excise tax and commercial tax revenue. So, that was voted in favor, and that will be going to the Traffic Commission. Item number seven, 18-384, this is, this was also voted in favor, this has to do with the citywide permit parking.
We'll take up number six, we'll complete that basis, audit as amended.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, all opposed? Council Zambuto?
I want to add another slight amendment to it, which is to allow for prorating. In other words, if someone comes and...
Was that discussed at the Subcommittee?
No, but Council Zambuto...
I refer to the Subcommittee Chairman, Mr. Council Keith?
Council Zambuto makes a good point, in what he's saying for prorating, meaning if the permits are issued on, let's just say, February to February basis, if someone was to come in the middle of the year...
Yes.
And we would only grant them the six months, we wouldn't charge them for the full 12.
Exactly. Sounds reasonable.
I think that's reasonable.
Sounds reasonable.
And I'm going to say the same thing on the other one also, so...
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So, audit.
Thank you. And so, item number seven, 18384, the motion that was presented by Council McKenna and Council Janino. This was also, it was ordered as a late communication to be sent to the Traffic Commission. So, this will be discussed, and we understand that this is going to be a little bit of a lengthy process, but it will be brought up and discussed in the next Traffic Commission meeting, and then we will continue to make modifications and go back in front of the Legislative Affairs, and then go back hopefully for some final approvals at the end of February to the Traffic Commission. That was also voted favorably unanimously by the Legislative Affairs Committee.
I applaud your Subcommittee for working so hard with the previous members of the Legislative Affairs Committee, and I think this is the most important issue facing the community as a whole, and I think everyone takes the same interest in that. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. One more.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, audit. Next.
Yep. The last one, item number eight, 18-399, this is actually in front of the Traffic Commission this current week, so it's already gone in front, but all the members were in favor as well. And this is to remove the provision that allows outside, commercial vehicles from outside of the city to park on Revere Streets. Obviously, they can currently park in private properties, and that's not a problem, is this would be removing the ability for them to obtain a commercial parking permit to park around the street in the city of Revere unless it's a Revere business and also a Revere-registered vehicle. So, this is going in front of the Traffic Commission on Thursday.
Thank you again, another great motion. All in favor, all opposed?
Thank you.
So, audit.
That wraps it up.
Next is the...
Councilor Rotundo is asked for a point of personal privilege. Council Rotundo?
Thank you, Council President. Really hate to bring this forward, but recently a city employee publicly attacked this body, stating that, and her name is Dimple Rana, she's a candidate, an open candidate for Council at large.
Council, please restrain from using names.
Okay, well, she is an open candidate, and she is an employee here, so she's a public employee. But, what she said on a recent podcast, if you will, is that she insinuated that this body, each and every one of us, were racist, that in her comments, it also further insinuated that our community, that we've done so much to change the image, insinuated that it was a ghetto. What troubles me the most is that she basically then tried to say that my colleague to the left stated that, he said that immigrants were cockroaches, which is disgusting, and those were never his words. Aside from the fact that she called me a racist, which was very upsetting to my children, and in fact, my daughter, Amanda, is very, very upset over this, considering that my children, bicultural, my ex-wife's Colombian, as is my children, not to even go into my extended family. But, that said, there is no place for that type of commentary by any employee of this community. You know, this is a true degradation, not only of this body, but of our community, and it should not be tolerated.
Okay, thank you, Council Rotundo. Council Zambuto?
I think I'll refrain from going any further. I think enough was said that vindicates what I had originally said, so I'm...
I get it.
I'm not going to go any further.
John? Director of Human Resources would like to address the council?
John Virella, Director of Human Resources, thank you very much. I see this as a private personnel issue. You know, we do have a policy that deals with this particular matter. I'm currently working with the mayor and union leadership to decide how best to apply it to this situation, but it is a private personnel issue, and I would prefer that it not be discussed in this particular forum. I'm happy to answer questions from any of the councilors. You can email me, you can call me, you can drop by my office. I'm happy to speak to you on an individual basis about this, but I would, again, respectfully request that we not use this forum to discuss personnel issues.
Well, you can rest assured, this is not going to be used as that type of conversation, but each and every councilor sitting here has the right to address a point of personal privilege. When their character has been impugned, and such as the allegation that was just made, they have a certain right to address it, and we won't go into details about this. We certainly could bring it out and have a comment about it, because it is part of our rules of order. And so, under that guidelines, I allow that based, after I did review, and I didn't just allow it to be said without reviewing our rules of order. Council Rizzo?
You know, I wasn't going to say anything on this, because I think enough has been said, and, but you articulated it, Mr. President. When somebody's character has been called into question, of course, this is a public forum. Every time something happens that involves personnel, and this is no disrespect to you, John, you know, but you come up and say it should be discussed privately. You know, we had somebody that was arrested and marched out of City Hall for stealing, for selling stolen water meters. We had to find out about it through social media, and we were told, oh, no, that, you know, nothing to see here, and, you know, we really shouldn't talk about that. That's a private issue. Everything's a private issue. You know, when it comes to, this is a public, you know, this is the city of Revere, they're public employees, you sign up for the job, you know, we have a job to do and they have a job to do. Everything can't be behind closed doors all the time. And this is something, I think, you know, if you had the chance to, you know, to watch it and see what was said, you'd probably feel the same way. It reflects very negatively on the city council. And, you know, if we're trying, as it's always been said to us, that we're trying to lift the city up, this type of stuff isn't lifting it up. It can't be selectively lift up the city when it serves purposes for certain people. And then it's negative when somebody brings up an issue that is factual, but, you know, geez, you're bringing the city down. Well, what are we supposed to do? Say nothing, or just cut, you know, go down into your private office so someone can have a letter and a file or something like that? You know, look, these are real issues. These are issues, and they should be handled. That's all I'm going to say. I'm not even looking for a response, John, to be honest with you, you know, because I feel the way I feel. Members of this council can feel the way they do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council, I'm not going to allow that to take place anyway. I'm just going to stay for the publication and edification of those in attendance and those viewing at home, that Rule 15, referring to personal privilege, the right of councillor to address the council on a question of personal privilege shall be limited to the cases in which integrity, character of motives of a councillor have been assailed, questioned, or impugned. And in these particular categories, each and every one of those qualify under Rule 15 for a councillor to state his point of personal privilege. To discuss the matter in detail, I suggest we do it in executive session, and that's going to not take place at this forum.
Mr. President, if I may for one quick second to kind of...
Other councilors haven't spoken yet. Council Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I think that there's a time and a place for everything, and I think that the city does a good job handling sensitive issues. I don't think it's right to call people out, but when you make yourself a public figure, you in effect do that to yourself. You're putting yourself in a platform to speak publicly and to make comments publicly. And if there's one thing I will say, this city council has done so much over the past several years since I've been on it to change and to grow. Last year, I served as the president with the first-ever female vice president, and we represented our city. We're breaking barriers, we're making change, and for people to speak out against that and to speak and say that we're not is sad to me and hurts me personally. And I hope that citizens know that this city is growing, this city is changing, this city is welcoming, and if anyone has anything negative to say about that, I challenge them to speak to me directly, because it's offensive, and it really kind of hit a nerve with me. So, there's a time and a place for everything, but I don't want the opinions of one person to affect the things that my colleagues and I brought about last year and the change that we started, so thank you.
Council McKenna? Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was upset with the whole video, but the thing, what I got very upset with, another issue, was the swearing. These are representatives of Revere, and it just, what we've been trying to do here is we've been trying to raise the standards of our city. We're trying to make it the best place to come. We're trying to get rid of the stigma and the reputation that we've had for years and years and years. And I know these two very personally, they were my students, but for swearing on social media and you're representing the city, shame on you. That's all I have to say.
Well, I think that's the case, and that's why personal privilege was allowed, and it really did, what it did was, it brought to light something that we want to nip it in the bud. We want to stop this immediately, because this city council, for the past several years, have been working unbelievably well, and we've been serving the community, and not just because I sit here, it's because I see it and view it. I've seen in the past several years ago, it wasn't so. But, this council's worked painstakingly to try to achieve and do the right thing for our community. And to have a couple individuals, because they're aspiring for something, not go out and do it the old-fashioned way, work hard, do what you have to do, sell yourself as a salesman, sell your, but don't use that as a platform to criticize people who are working very, very hard to do the right thing for their community. And, you know, do I take it personal? Of course I do. I'm supposed to protect the integrity of this city council, because that's why you all voted for me, and that's going to happen. That's going to happen here. We're not going to allow individual people to come up and destroy what we've tried to work for so hard. The truth is in the pudding of what we're doing here. We have differences with the administration, we do it professionally. That's the way it's going to be done. That's the way we do it. We all can't think the same, we all don't think alike, but we certainly don't have to criticize and put people down in a negative fashion and say outrageous things about one[1761.70] another. It's not fair. And so, the end of that story here, if we need to go and, Counselor, I'll allow one more minute, and that's what our rules of order are all called for. One more minute, Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. I just want to point out that normally, I would be a little bit more boisterous, but respecting the rule that you have put down, and more importantly, how you want to conduct the council. But I would like to point out to the head of Human Resources, this isn't just an employee, this is an avowed public candidate. So you have two different laws that you're talking about now. So, you know, it can't be just private when this person is now publicly a candidate. So with that said...
Thank you very much.
I'll reserve my comments.
End it there, and then we'll conduct our business and do it in an orderly fashion. Yes, we're going to allow just one minute on this, and we're not going to make it a roast here.
Did you watch the video of the people that have spoken? Did you watch it? Because I really don't think I want to defend Dimple, but I don't think she...
We're not going to use names, please. Please refrain.
The people that you're talking about, I don't think she called the, all of you, a racist. She was encouraged to call, can I call George by name? She was, by Calvin Feliciano, he made her say George Rotundo. And I'm not here to defend her, but you have to watch that, because, and she blocked me because I was involved in that. She also asked me today to meet with her, and I did. So I explained our side, and I had to listen to her side, and I explained the whole Tony Zambudo side. And she knew that cockroach thing was not, that immigrants multiply. She understood that it was exactly how he meant it, that bad guys multiply together to hang together and that kind of stuff. So, I'm not here to defend her, but I'm defending her, because she didn't call all you guys racist.
Okay, let's do this.
And you've got to watch it.
Mr. President, I have to respond now, because I didn't want to...
Counselor Zambuto.
I didn't want to bring this up. This happened last year, when on this body, I said, we were talking about MS-13 gang bangers, and I said, they multiply like cockroaches. This person in question went on a public forum in Chelsea in front of a big group of people, and it came back to me from the State House, that I called immigrants cockroaches. And that's the person that said it. I have the videos. I never brought anything out of it, because I didn't want to honor it.
Okay.
But where my name has been brought up in that kind of a, in that kind of a forum, I have to now defend what I said, because it's on record on this city council.
Thank you, Counsel.
And I never, nobody likes immigrants any more than me. We were talking about a particular, we were talking about gang bangers, and that was, that was all it was about.
Conversation's over.
But somebody went and lied about that in Chelsea.
Thank you, Tony.
And it's public. I have all the DVDs about it.
Thank you, Counselor Zambuto. Next, next.
Mr. President.
Counselor Patch.
Now might be a good time for me to bring up what I wanted to bring up tonight.
State your point of personal privilege.
Thank you. I just want to announce, after 12 years on the Ward 6 city council, that I am not going to run for reelection. I am going to retire. And I want to thank the people of Ward 6 for my dear support. And it's just, it's been 12 good years. Thank you.
Well, my colleagues are speaking to the Ward 6 counselor. It certainly comes as a great shock to all of us this evening, as he announced that he will not be seeking reelection in this coming fall. And he certainly will be missed by this city council, and I'm sure for all the folks in Ward 6, they extend their greetings to him, because he's one heck of a nice guy. And I certainly will miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for the shock.
I'm going to miss your, I'm going to miss my colleagues that I'm serving with now and in the past. And I just want to thank you for being friends.
Thank you. Next order of business?
Calendar item number nine is the Public Safety Subcommittee report.
Mr. Chairman, Public Safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Public Safety met earlier today, and we had a long agenda, and we didn't take care of everything, but we took care of a good majority of it. Item number nine is 18-257. It's a motion by Counselor Rotundo. The city of Revere changed its building code to mandate any building with 50 units or more that they must maintain an AED in its body, in its lobby. Well, we discussed it, and the committee voted that to change the 50 units to over six units, and that there must be one AED per floor in a multi-story building. And this recommendation, we recommend that this adjustment be approved, and that be sent to site plan review to include in all buildings. And that was recommended by the committee.
Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. And through you too, Counselor Novosowski. I unfortunately am not on your committee, and I understand the want for safety. I think the reduction seems to be a little bit overwhelming. I'm just thinking of a homeowner, you know, someone that maybe had the property for the last 30, 40, 50-plus years, and it happens to be seven or eight units. And most often, a seven or eight-unit building is going to be three stories, probably two to three stories. And I just look at it, it potentially could be an overwhelming cost for a six or seven unit. We're not talking about the 50, the 100, the 150-unit buildings that, you know, they're three, four, $100 million properties, $150 million properties. We're talking about, sorry, homes on Revere Street or Beach Street. We're talking about, you know, regular homeowners. So, I would not be in favor of that small of a number of units for the IEDs.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
I think they've done some really good work in your committee, Ira, and I thank you. We might want to bring it to the city solicitor, to see if there might be any legal issues there, as far as demanding. And I'm not sure if there is. I don't think there is, but just to be safe. And I don't know if you want to revisit the requirement of six or 10 units, whatever number you have, because each individual AED can run anywhere between $600 to as high as $2,000. So that's like a cost issue that you might want to look at. If, so, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it to the committee meeting. Actually, I was at work. So, all right, I would have attended, but a little bit too early for me.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, one way or the other, I'm going to support your measure.
Chairman Novosowski, what's the desire of the chairman?
You know, I'm willing to go, you know, to more units. I can do 20 units.
Do you want it to be referred back to your committee?
No, I think we can solve it tonight. I think 20 units would be reasonable, and that's about three floors. So I would say, as I stated earlier, by the time someone gets down to a lobby to bring the AED back up to the third floor, minimum, it's going to be too late for the guy.
They're out of breath. That's right, they're out of breath.
Through the chair.
So if we can do 20, 20 units, we'll do three floors or more?
I think that's a great idea. As amended by Counselor Novosowski, the units will change to 20 units. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Next order of business?
The next item is a motion by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor, fire chief, and chief of police meet in an executive session to speak about the security profile at the successful Sandcastle event. The committee felt that it was, it's January going into February, and this should have been addressed last year. So, they voted to recommend to place it on file.
Counselor Rotundo?
Through you to the chair, would you be remiss to readdress it later on, closer towards it? Because my goal is to see if we can get volunteers to help out at the tent. I mean, that's pretty much the issue. And I spoke to Chief Guido about it. I haven't spoken to Chief Bright, but we have a very limited critical care profile. So that's pretty much it.
Bring it up later, because this was introduced last year.
Correct.
In February.
Thank you.
And it's sat here, so. So the committee voted to place that on file.
Oh, no, place it on file. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
18-280, a motion by Counsel Morabito, that the mayor requests MassDOT to investigate the feasibility of reallowing a U-turn on Usher Road between Sharmid Street and Revere Street for traffic traveling northbound on Route 1A. Residents traveling to their homes in the lower Ward 5 neighborhood must wait in severely congested Revere Street traffic. Further, this would help alleviate the traffic in the Revere Street area by not forcing certain traffic northbound. And the committee voted unfavorable to this request, to this motion.
Motion is to deny request. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
The next item is 18-281, a motion by Counsel Janino and McKenna, that the mayor requests a DPW to investigate the feasibility of using a more visible paint color for crosswalks. The Revere Beautification Committee and Beach Improvement Committee would like to see a brighter color such as red to draw more attention to the crosswalks. This was discussed with Superintendent Public Works, and Julie Demaro was involved in this, and the recommendation was to place on file.
Motion, place on file.
18-285, a motion by Counsel Rizzo, that the mayor direct the director of Inspection Services to appear before the city council to discuss policies and procedures pertaining to the city's ongoing and future efforts to combat rat infestation. This was withdrawn by Counsel Rizzo.
So moved.
18-344, and this is a request for Chapter 148 license by TA Revere LLC, 28th State Street, 10th Floor, Boston, Mass, requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for above-ground storage of 6,020 gallons of gasoline contained within 301 vehicles to be parked in a parking garage at a residential apartment building at 650 Ocean Avenue, Revere, Mass. And with the people that appeared before us, TA Revere LLC sold the property to Greystone, and they will redo all the paperwork. And we did mention to them about the parking issue, about requesting future leases not include the paying of separate parking in the building, and that they included in their future leases. And the committee recommended that this be approved.
On the request of the Chair President, that this be approved? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
And motion 18-350, Counsel Rizzo, the mayor requests the chief of police to brief the city council on school safety preparedness and what measures have been taken to identify and combat acts of violence, should a response be required. And this was, amendment was made that it be included in executive session at a future meeting, and the committee voted that this recommendation be approved.
On the recommendation of the Subcommittee, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
And the last two items, 18-352 and 18-355, remained on the table.
So noted.
That's our report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Calendar item number 18.
Number 18 is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Madam Chairperson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the Appointment Subcommittee met and had a very productive meeting. There were two items on the agenda. The first was calendar item 19006, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Jay Masterson, construction as a licensed drain layer. This appointment will only be for the season, so it'll go out of effect as of March 31st or April 1st. Counsel Novosowski noted to make sure that his insurance paperwork is up to date as it expires this year. So, the council Subcommittee voted unanimously in favor. So I ask that the council as a whole take up this item first.
Roll call on the request of the Chair President.
On the confirmation of Jay Masterson's construction as a licensed drain layer, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Madam Chairperson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on our agenda was multiple appointments to the Council on Elder Affairs. So there were several reappointments. Nicholas Jacoby, Irma Architillo, Amadeo Ioko, Josephine Bacardi, Thelma Smith, Morris Morris, Vincent Camerata, Agnes Ferrioli, and Roseanne Colanina. The council spoke very highly of all of the people that were up for reappointment, as well as the new appointments, Rosemary Solo, Anne Egan, Mary Ann Fiori, Patricia Manzo, and Lorraine Repoli. These were all voted out favorably, and although this committee typically does not call appointments of people that were not in attendance, we felt that these individuals were adequately represented by Steve Fielding, as well as other members of their committee, and we voted them out unanimously.
Good move. Roll call has been ordered.
Confirmation for the appointments, as reported by Counselor Janino, for the Elder Affairs, for the Council on Elder Affairs. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Congratulations.
Onto motions, calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counsel Novosowski, that the mayor requests the License Commission to reduce the fees for veterans organizations in the city of Revere who have a 501(c)(19) RIS code by 50%.
Counsel Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I put this in knowing that there's only three veteran organizations in the city. And with the way things are these days, with membership and participation, the amount of the fees from the License Commission are overwhelming to them. And I feel there's another way that the city can help our vets after what they've done for, you know, their service to their country, to reduce all their License Commission fees by 50%. So...
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councils wishing to speak? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counsel McKenna, that the mayor requests the Water and Sewer Department to install trench drains on the following streets to alleviate flooding from Belle Isle Marsh and ocean storm surges. Pearl Avenue, Crystal Ave., and Belle Isle Avenue. Over the last two years, the high tide levels are causing major flooding on these streets, and the lack of storm drains are a contributing factor to the flooding.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, in the last two years, we've had major water damage down in these streets. And I have met with a couple of city workers, and to see if we could try to find a solution to alleviate the water that comes from the marsh and the ocean. Trench drains were said to me, but after talking to Superintendent Caramella, he came up with something that he's going to install in Victoria Street, because Victoria Street is having major water problems also. And they're called dry wells, and I'm going to show you a picture of them. So, these are going to, they're going to be tested in part of Ward 1, Victoria Street, and a couple of the streets that get flooded. And if it works, then maybe we can install them in these streets that are having storm surges from the ocean and the marsh. So, I think they might work.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counsel Rizzo, that the mayor requests the Director of Finance to update the city...
the Director of Finance to update the city council on the status of a $25 million transportation bond bill that was authorized by the legislature back in 2015 to allow for a commuter rail station at Wonderland Dog Park.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is almost a follow-up to Counselor McKenna's last motion pertaining to flooding and, you know, adverse types of things that happen with development and the creation of density. So we've just approved a master plan. The city council approved a master plan for Suffolk Downs, and clearly, you know, you're going to see an awful lot of development down there, a lot of vehicular traffic, things like that. You know, one of the last parcels, big parcels of land the city has is Wonderland Dog Track. And I am extremely concerned about the city, and of course, I would never support it, at least in its totality, similar to what we did at Suffolk Downs. We would have to have strong measures. I would not want to see an overlay district go into Wonderland to allow for even more apartments, more housing. I think one way, and one of the things we were trying to do back, you know, prior to 2016 when I was mayor, was to try to create opportunities to draw more commercial development. You may recall, we had a couple of economic development summits, and one of the things we heard during those summits was how important the transportation was. And so through the efforts of our state delegation, obviously Speaker DeLeo, Representative Vincent, I, you know, I... It's just, they did a remarkable job moving that transportation bond bill through, and it was for $25 million. That would have allowed for a commuter rail station at Wonderland. I think that would be a great first step, a proactive step, for us to start preparing that site because you know that there is going to... There will be plans down the road to develop that site. It's not going to stay an empty lot of, you know, close to 40 acres. It's just not going to happen. So I think that if we can just get a status of where that transportation bond bill is, it would give us a head start toward creating a vision that the city wants for that site and not wait for developer to come in and tell the city what they want to do. We want to be able to be proactive and go out and seek out opportunities for the City of Revere. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a motion that's very positive for the City of Revere. And if you know, it's my ward. I've spoken very frequently on the need for that station, that commuter rail station. When you think of it, the Swamsgard has a commuter rail station. Salem has one. Lynn has two, one at the GE and one at Central Square. Chelsea has one. I think it's, you know, when you're talking about a combination of 242 acres of commercial property between Neco, Wonderland, and the project at HYM. And I've had conversations with Tom O'Brien on this also. You know, when you stop and think, for even HYM to be a success, 161 acres in that property, people need a way to get there. And you have to be able to draw from the North Shore, not just from the South Shore, or East or West, from the North Shore, as far down as Newburyport, Gloucester, that area there. The best way to do that is a commuter station at the rear of Wonderland where they walk over to get people over to the Blue Line where now they go two stops to the HYM project. Two stops. Oh, how many people talk about the traffic on North Shore Road? That's a consistent complaint that I hear all the time. And you know, the least expensive way to extend that Blue Line to Lynn is to do the commuter station and eliminate all of the takings that would be required along 1A, the City of Revere, the Point of Pines, the Bay Road area. So costly. The least expensive way, and there's no doubt in my mind, is to put that commuter station at the back of Wonderland. $25 million. So maybe now it's $38 or $39 million. But it's a step in the right direction. I was down looking at the tracks in back of the Neco project. They're about 15 feet from the Neco property line. Wonderland, perfect spot for a business transportation complex. And that's what can happen down there, and I believe that's what will happen. We have a governor that lives in Swamsgard. He must see it every day. He must see that Wonderland is demoed now. There's no longer property down there. It's the perfect spot for any potential developer to look at. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't disagree with Counselor Rizzo or Counselor Powers. I think it's a very important location. But unless I'm incorrect, the bond bills still have to be approved by the governor.
That's correct. That's 100% correct.
Through the chair.
You know, the city can make recommendations of what we want to see on the Wonderland site, but it's up to the governor to release money for that $25 million for the MBTA to go forward for design and then construction, which it may cost more than $25 million by the time they do it, but it's three years. And I know the costs have gone up, so I don't know what the treasurer is going to be able to tell us, the Director of Finance be able to tell us. But I think we ought to be asking our state delegation to find out what's going on with it, and whether or not the governor's going to, you know, make a move on releasing this money. So.
Mr. President, just a quick point of information.
Counselor Rizzo.
I don't disagree with Counselor Novosowski. The governor clearly has to approve it and make it a priority of his. But, you know, I think the first step, and what the motion is trying to do, is just get information. Who gives us the information? I don't really care if it comes from the Director of Finance. If you want to drag our state delegation up here and have them respond to us, whatever, I just want to know where does it sit? Is it still active? Is it still there? If not, I think we... I'd like to see the ball start rolling to go back to the legislature and ask them for a reappropriation, you know? Thank you.
Counselor Powers, one last time.
Just a point of information. I have spoken on several occasions to Senator Boncorri, who happens to be the chairman of the Senate Committee on Transportation, and he's well aware of the need for that station and back there. And I'm sure that's something that he would very much like to do. Thank him.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no further business before the city council.
Mr. President?
Counselor Janino.
Can I make a point of personal privilege?
You certainly may.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that the State of the City address will be held on February 7th at 6:30 at the Susan B. Anthony School. For anyone that is willing to watch, we got a notification as a council, so I figured I'd advertise it out to everyone so everyone knows. So it's February 7th, 6:30 at the Susan B. Anthony School.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no further business before the city council this evening, this council will be adjourned until February 11th. Thank you for your attendance.